Good afternoon. Welcome to the August meeting in the Board of Education at Pennsyl City Schools. We rise from the second leg, please. How about Mr. Babbitt?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you mind everybody to turn yourselves phones into the appropriate place? We'll go to the adoption and approval of the agenda. Mitch, did you want an item hold?
Yes, we do want an item hold. There's still some, there's still some changes being proposed on the item number six, I believe it is, under business services.
Is that time for the boys or girls?
Yeah, yeah.
Would you like that hold?
We'll carry that over to the next meeting.
Can we hold item seven under business services?
Hold for consideration. Oh, it was the Ags. Yeah. I apologize for that.
That was six.
So let's hold item seven, business seven.
Okay.
Okay, so six, six is out?
Yeah.
Seven is going to be a hold. Did you have another one?
No.
Okay, so as amended?
Second.
All is okay then?
Aye.
All right, that'll work. Let's go to the minutes for July 16th. I believe everybody here is eligible to vote on these minutes.
Yes.
Any corrections and revisions and any participles? Can we get a motion?
Second.
Hello, some favor?
Aye.
Minutes are approved. Jamie?
Yeah?
You're up.
That was quick. Oh, she was fine, huh?
It was fine.
Yeah, it was fine. Okay.
Must've got the movement.
Hi, we have two reports tonight. The first one is about the D-LAC. D-LAC, District English Learner Advisory Council. It is a group of parents that meet four times during the year. And their responsibilities are listed here. They're responsible for helping us develop the master plan, doing a needs assessment both district-wide and in each of the schools. They meet four times a year and they help us establish the goals and objectives for our ELL program. And those are kind of listed right there, making sure that all of our teachers and instructional assistants are NCLB compliant, no child left behind, reviewing the annual language census and seeing the trends that of ELL students were coming in, looking at our reclassification processes that we changed up a little bit a couple of years ago, and then reviewing written notifications to be sure that we're clear with folks and communicating with parents regarding the progress, the academic progress and linguistic progress of their children. Each year, the D-LAC is required to give a report to the board. And our D-LAC president is on vacation, Mr. Flores is on vacation, so I got elected to do the report to the board tonight for you guys. And this is what they are recommending. They have two areas really that they focus on. One is the continuous support and monitoring of academic performance of our English language learners, which of course we are very, very focused on, making sure that our ELL students are moving ahead both linguistically and academically. And in our next report, you're going to see a little bit of that. And they are recommending that we really focus on helping ELL students also access Common Core state standards as we move towards them, and that we consider the needs of ELL students in the planning and implementation of that whole project that we're involved with. The second big area that they are recommending is to provide parents accurate and timely information in their home language. They're very focused on encouraging parent participation, which incidentally is also our district leadership team required by our program improvement for Title I, also came to a focus on parent participation, so these two groups are kind of merging around that issue. So they want to encourage more parent participation. They're saying that we've hired bilingual personnel in all the schools, and they would really like to see that, especially in the secondary schools, that we use that bilingual personnel to increase contacts, home-to-school contacts, so that they're more informed about what's going on with their individual students. Because parents get, and I'm sure all of us have kids or had kids who went through high school, you know how you get to go to the parent-teacher conference, you get to spend all the time in the elementary school, and then that starts to taper off because of the number of contacts. So they're asking if we would consider different ways, and they'll help us look at different ways that we might be using some of our bilingual personnel to increase those contacts. They really want to encourage people to participate in both the English Language Learner Councils at the schools and the District English Language Learner Advisory Council. They've noted that a couple of schools do not participate in the D-LAC, and so we're going to work on that. We're going to see what we can do about that. And then finally, they really want to continue, there's, SCO has a parent, a series of parent workshops for bilingual parents every year, and they really thank you for attending, their ability to attend their workshops, and they want to continue with that. They get a lot of good information there. That is really the whole D-LAC report. We had right here, our D-LAC is a very active group, very caring, very well-informed, and they would like to spread that word out across the community even more. Questions?
I know, but just one. It's hard to look at you in the dark. Is there some mechanism whereby the D-LAC community could participate, especially in the secondary schools, more actively perhaps in, I don't know, back-to-school or open house or some other method, so that the general population at those schools recognizes that, but also to catch those parents who aren't able to get to a D-LAC or D-LAC?
That is a good suggestion. I think there probably would be a way of doing that, and we can talk about that. I can put that on your agenda. Their first meeting will be in October.
Okay.
So even just like a booth or something at the back-to-school nights?
Right, and have it, I mean obviously that's after back-to-school. But if there's some other events where there's going to be, you know, whether it's one of those college nights that I read about, so that parents can have another person to talk to that's another parent to share information that if they can't get to the meetings but have an opportunity a couple of times throughout the year to engage.
Sure, that's a great suggestion.
And certainly open house.
Yeah, absolutely. We are going, we have committed ourselves, the D-LAC committed itself this year to providing a bilingual Spanish-speaking somehow interacting with the college nights, so that there's more information coming out into our Latino community around college. They feel that's a really important point that we need to work on, so that's one of the things that they'll be working on this year, so.
When you mentioned that some of them don't participate in the D-LAC, is it a voluntary participation?
There's, there's a mechanism at the ELLAC at the school level, they elect a D-LAC representative, and sometimes either nobody's willing to be the D-LAC representative, or somebody says they will and then they can't come to meetings or things like that. Lots of things happen, so that's really why they're not participating. We actually have a pretty active D-LAC. It's pretty, very well-attended, and we have great discussions.
Is it a county department or SCO?
It's a state department.
Or state.
It's a state department.
Any questions here? Thank you.
Sure. Okay, now, let's hope I can do this. All right, so tonight we're also going to look at the test course. We have a new skin that goes over Ares, which is our student information management system, and this skin is called Edums, which is giving us greater flexibility in reporting and looking at how we look at how the kids are progressing. So let me start with this, that CST was given last April. We, you know that we are in a transition, we're in transition mode, and you've probably read the newspapers over the course of last week of people talking about schools being in a transition because of the Common Core state standards. I'm going to be honest, just as I was with John Jackson this morning, we are not fully implemented with Common Core, but we are just beginning. So some of the trends that I talk about tonight, I don't think we can contribute completely to the Common Core, but I do believe that there are, there are some mitigating factors because of focus. And as people are moving toward a new thing and away from an old thing, that we may begin to lose some focus here, okay? And let me assure you that it's happening everywhere. So, this is English Language Arts, this is district-wide. You can see the bands, far below basic, below basic, basic, proficient and advanced, those are the five proficiency bands on the CST, and the colors here correspond to the bands. You will notice that there are almost, the far below basics are so teeny-nuey that they're almost invisible. That is great news. You can see right here how many far below basic in the entire district. K-12, 3.98% of the students were far below basic. That's great news. That is not true 10 years ago, when we first started testing on, with the, using the CST. That is not true. Those percentages were much, much higher. So there is great movement that has happened over the course of these years. This line right here kind of demonstrates that, because this is the line, this is basic, and these two areas are proficient and advanced. So you can see that over the course of the last three years, we've had just a little tiny, tiny smidgen of growth, pretty, pretty flat, but just a little bit. English Language Arts, okay? If we go down to math, you can see the same thing, and you can see that there's actually just a little bit more growth in math. And you can see it both here in the far below and below basic group, the kids moving out and up into the higher bands, and then just a little, that, I mean you can barely see the, the growth there. Here's a cool thing for this year, I can show you science. We've never been able to look at science this way before. So here's science across the district, and it looks pretty good. And then this is the overall science, and this, this is the end-of-course science exams, and that looks even better. We want to see lots of kids, big numbers scoring up in these areas, okay? And then we can also look at history, social science, and there you can really see the growth over the course of the last three years, and what's happened over the course of the last three years. You see that this line is going down, which means kids are moving out of far below basic and below basic and up into, not just basic, but up into proficient and advanced. That is pretty important, because this is where kids are applying their skills, not just learning the skills, but where they're applying them. So that's going to be important for us to watch this over the course of the next couple of years with Common Core, because Common Core requires much more focus on application rather than just rote learning. Yeah, Mary?
Hate to nitpick, but it's actually, you want that line to go down, because you want the columns, the proficient and advanced to grow.
Thank you, Mary.
So when you look at the percentages, you know, we've got 48%.
Like here?
Yeah.
Yeah, world history's better.
Yeah.
World history is better than history in general.
Right.
Okay, thank you, sorry about that. All right, so that is just a quick overview of kind of where we're at in general in the test course, and looking at in general in the test course. Now we're going to move over to the proficiency summaries. And this is a little more demonstrative of how things are going. So here we're looking at English Language Arts, whole district, and these are our subgroups, okay? These are the significant subgroups for us in Penn Loma City schools, which means we have over 100 kids in each one of these subgroups, except for that one right there. And it keeps showing up and I can't make it go away, so I don't know why it's there. So you can see that back here in 2010, 11, district-wide in English Language Arts overall, we scored 64.2%, and in 2013, we scored 63.4. And you're going to see that across all of these. There's just a little bit of a loss across all of the scores in all of the subgroups. I will look real quickly at Anglo kids, 74 to 71, English learners, 22 to 18.9, almost 19, and then special ed, 42.3 to 36.2. This was a high year for our special ed kids, because sometimes there's a bubble, and that was a high year for that group of kids. Let me run up and catch math real quick. Here's mathematics. Same thing for mathematics, and if you look, there's just, it's once again, we have a little bit of a decline from 50 to 48.5, from 56 to 54, and then for English Language learners, from 19 to 17, and special ed, 30, 30.8 to 30.2. When we look at the scores by grade level, we can see that kids are progressing, but when we aggregate them up, that the small amount of progression that's happened in some of those grade levels is washed out by the aggregate. So we're not, overall, we're seeing just a slight loss across.
Do you look separately at elementary versus secondary?
We do look at separately at elementary and secondary, and I won't, I won't bore you with all of that, but we've been spending a lot of time looking at this and looking at the trends. This one is really an important one, because this one is the comparison, oops, come on, there it is. So here's the grade levels. This is English Language Arts across the last three years, and 350 is proficient, 350 is proficient. So you can see that second grade fell just a foot by one point. Third grade above, fourth grade above, fifth grade above, sixth grade above, seventh grade above, eighth grade above, ninth grade above, 10th grade above, and 11th grade above. But you can also see that from here to here, all the way across, except for fourth grade, there's just a little bit of a dip, fourth grade and 10th grade. That mirrors what's going on across the county, that Language Arts is dipping a little bit more than math is. Our elementary schools have had a tremendous amount of professional development around math and are working to implement Common Core in mathematics first. So we can think about that, maybe not attribute it completely, but we can actually think about that as we move towards full Common Core implementation. It could be one of the reasons for that dip, although you see, you're going to see the same dip here, but not in as many grade levels. So we're above, 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 all the way through the 350, which is where, except for right here, which is in general math. And then when we get up into, let me move that down just a little bit. Algebra I and aggregate of Algebra I, this is all the kids who took Algebra I, geometry, Algebra II, and then the summative math goes back down again. That's the, some of the, that are taken at different grade levels, okay? So you can see that we're holding pretty steady, little dips in through here, pretty steady, and then the dips, it dips pretty significantly, holds steady dip, kind of holding steady, a little bit of an increase and then dip, dip, and a little kind of dip. So we're seeing that all the way across all of the scores. We'll look at one more, I promise, I won't play with my toy anymore. We'll look at one more, and this is, this right here, and you notice that this is an estimate, this is a disclaimer, that this is the estimate of the API for our schools for this year, because we of course don't have the actual API yet, but we can look across the schools, and here is the site comparison. Penn Loma City schools, this is a little bit deceiving, because if you remember, when we reported last year, we said that our API was 810. You would think that that would have gone up, because it's 816 this year, but there was a recalculation getting ready for Common Core, and our final API was 823 after the recalculation. So we are now at 816, so we did lose some points, and that's how you can tell, is if you look at the red bar, that means the API is going down, and the green bar means the API is going up. Okay? API is the cornerstone of the accountability system in California. Questions?
So the alternative schools, though, they have another assessment program, so this is a little bit skewed because of the.
Right, and their populations are so small.
Exactly.
Okay.
Because it looks fabulous.
It does look, it's good. But they're kind of inconsistent, because their populations are so small, they change constantly, so it's a little bit less reliable. Yeah, Mike?
Well, it's still the case that the children taking these tests are under no incentive or disincentive to do well or, you know, try the hardest, correct?
There is, yes, that is always a consideration, especially in secondary schools. At the 10th grade now, 11th grade, I'm sorry, at the 11th grade, if Casa, Penn Loma, any of the secondary schools, they now do something called the Early Assessment Program, EAP, and what it does is it takes a sampling of questions out of the CST, and then there's a writing sample, and it tells the kids whether they're ready for college or not. And if they score at a certain level on the EAP, then that will get them out of taking the English courses that are required at freshman year of college.
But that's a separate test, that's not this test, it's just based on this test.
It's the CST, it's actually pieces of the CST.
But is it your score from this year's, I mean, is it?
It's a sampling.
Right, so it's a separate test.
Yeah, it's a, well, no, the questions are on the CST.
Pieces of this test.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, that's a step in the right direction.
So there's just, yeah.
I always thought that there needs to be some sort of component for this, because it goes under grade, you get extra credit. I mean, I, I know there's been some legality about that, I mean, just with simple rewards like giving them parking spaces and stuff. So that aside, I was just curious if we're doing it incentivized.
No, we're not doing any of that.
The second thing is, if you could explain in particular, because I've read the same thing that we all read, so how is Common Core standard implementation handicapping this sufficient enough to watch those scores go down, especially in light of all the money and resources we've, we've thrown at ELA? And, you know, I don't, I can't believe that all of a sudden we have this one or two-year transition and these scores will, will start tanking. That doesn't make sense to me, unless they've changed the test drastically.
Okay, so, Common Core looks at things differently. Right now, we are kind of covering the curriculum. We're going like this. Why? Not deep. So the teachers are tasked with getting through the book, and they're going from apples to zebras all the way through that book. Over the course of the next couple of years as we transition, the focus will narrow and deepen, so they will not be covering as many topics in a grade level, but they will be covering those topics in a much deeper way that will require the kids to use those four 21st century skills, collaboration, communication, critical thinking, and creativity.
I get that, but are they going to then test them on the CCCs? I mean, that's the problem, is that you're going this different direction, but you're still testing them on old, let's say, old methods.
Right.
So either the test has to change, which is going to.
The test is going to change dramatically, starting not this year, but next year. 1415 is the first year we'll give what they call the Smarter Balance assessment, and the Smarter Balance is made up of questions like, the students will read two pieces, T short pieces, and the questions will be compare and contrast those two pieces and find a common theme. Now write about that common theme from those two pieces.
That's, that's going to be subjective, this is objective.
There are also some, what they call selective response questions in here.
Wait, wait, how can you test that? You're going to test an essay?
You are going to score an essay, there are rubrics to score them with.
But, but I'd like to make the point that another thing that's happened over the last couple of years has been all of the cuts that we've made.
Yes.
And class sizes have been impacted as well as a number of other things that.
And more than instruction.
Exactly, so.
Less days of instruction, bigger class sizes, everything that we've done is impacts this.
Yeah, so I, I do feel that there's, it's not just transitioning, but it's also what's been happening.
Well, exactly, exactly. And that's what needs to be brought up. Everybody's dumping on Common Core.
On the transition, yeah.
And I, I just don't see it as being, you know, those are the real issues, what you and Troy just mentioned, funding, class size, fellow dudes. So at the end, at the end of the day, okay, so what? We're changing our direction now, so what does all this mean at the end of the day?
Yeah, at the end of the day, that's a good question. We are in that gray area right now, because we're not even sure we're going to give this test this year. We're not sure we're giving this test yet. So there's been, the state's asking for waivers from the feds. If we field test Smarter Balance, we may have a waiver where we don't have to give this. We will give the Smarter Balance field test instead of the CST. So we're right in that gray area right now. What it means is that this is how the kids on, over the course of about two weeks, this is what, the cumulative, not effect, but this is what they showed on one test, and the growth that they did, one quick snapshot of how they did, what they took from last year and last year's learning. One quick snapshot, though, it's not a full picture, and it never has been. And we have to remember to look at. And we have to remember to look at that.
Well, I think we've always been done it that way.
Yeah.
What?
Even in the good times.
Even in the good times, basically.
Yeah.
Because it's really all of those assessments that are done throughout the year where, where the practice is modified to, based on the needs of the students.
Right.
We all know that's way more effective.
And that is, as we go to Smarter Balance, there's actually supposed to be formative assessments built into it several times during the year, in addition to something that will look more summative like this. But this is the summative, this is the summary of what has, what the kids demonstrated in their learning during the two weeks they took this test.
Can we get a copy of...
Pardon?
Can we get a copy of this?
Absolutely. Yeah, I'll make you copies of it all. Sure.
Questions?
And I just want to point out, there's gonna be issues with the next two years and what...
Grading mistakes?
The state thinks how we're doing, and the no child left behind, which is still...
Is still a little above, yeah.
And so, you know, we could look horrible, but, you know, we know what we're doing, and so it's just...
Under no child left behind, are these schools a failing school?
By 2014.
Yeah.
Right. So, um, the two, two states that are furthest into this, New York and Kentucky, both states the scores fell around 20% the first time they gave the Common Core test.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So...
You want to represent it?
That's something to look forward to.
It would be nice if we could do a pilot next year, just so we kind of have an idea, and then, you know...
Well, we actually did pilot this year. We were got, we got chosen, not all of our schools got to pilot, but a couple of our schools did get to pilot, so the kids, some of the kids got to take the test, and all of the teachers got to see the test, because as the kids were taking the test, we were kind of sneaking in and out, and looking over shoulders, and, and watching what kind of questions were being asked, how they were being asked. I mean, this test is so radically different that on a selected response answer, which is the old multiple choice, you have to go back and read the passage again, and find the exact place, and then pick the exact place that you find whatever the quote is that they're quoting, and then you have to interpret that quote in the course of the next couple of questions. And the kids have to be, they're working on a split screen, so they're going, they're scrolling up and down this way, and up and down that way. So, it's not only content knowledge, but it's also technology, because it's all done on a computer.
Sounds like real stuff.
It is like real stuff.
Any other questions? Okay.
Okay.
All right. I'm gonna do the comments from the public, I have one speaker card. It's Sarah, Sarah Milman.
Boba.
Boba? Well, not about that, thank you.
I know, it's one of those things.
Now, I'm gonna ask you, there's a whole government vote section, blah, 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 here, did you read this one, fill this out? Or can you get a reading here, tell me about it?
You can tell me about it.
I'm gonna give you the truncated version, because you guys will get tired of reading it. It makes us sound really mean.
Sounds good.
Basically, if you have a claim against an employee, you need to, uh, there's a different way to handle that, we don't wanna do it. Okay? Give you five minutes, and if it's not an agendized item, which I believe this is not an agendized item, then we can't really respond to what she says, but we really do care about what you say, and we like to hear it. Got a fair summary of that, please?
Yeah.
Okay, so, go ahead, start.
Well, thank you for hearing me out. I'm really here to give my opinion about one of the issues that we're in Passover, and that's the Aries.net with the grade program. And I would really like to have shown you what it is I'm gonna be talking about, so I'm gonna give you the best graphic I can verbally that I can do. My reason for being here is to give you my perspective, that I've been talking about with other teachers for the last couple of years, caring about Aries and having worked with it a little bit over the last few years. I've been in the district since 2001, and I've been a teacher since 1994. So, I've had a lot of experience with grade books. I've been on a computer grade book, I think we started in 1997, and I got online in 2008, and then I found the program of my dreams in 2009, okay? So, I've been using that program ever since. And I love it so much that I forget $50 of my own money every year, so that I can get the email capability and the parent portal, if you go for that program every year. So, I've already put out about $250 of my own money. Professionally, we have a responsibility to the community and to the students first, to be able to communicate with them. I think that's what this is all about, is how we best communicate with them. And we need to be able to give them grade reports and emails, and we need to hopefully do calendars, things like that. Through this program, and I have found the best way to do this, for me, and I'm not advocating a one-size-fits-all, because other teachers are happy with their programs, but for me, I have found that my apparent complaint level is zero, my communication has risen exponentially since I started using it. And I don't wanna give it up, and that's my, that's my issue, is I feel that when I look at Aries, and I'm not computer illiterate at all, I feel like I'm being sent back to the Stone Age. If I could show you the difference, or graphically you could understand, that Aries works like a Norton tree, where you have to go down and click, 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 and it's like four or five clicks, and you have to read the fine print, and it's very difficult to navigate, compared to what I use, where it's more of a Windows format, where you, let's say if you wanna print reports, you say, okay, print, and up pops a screen with nine different visual graphics of what you might wanna print, and it works lickety-split like that, as opposed to Aries, which I've noticed takes time below. It might not sound like such a big deal, because they're both online, you know, but there are some differences. I cannot email from Aries.net, I have to go back to my PTK12.org to email. I cannot access the calendar from there, I have to go back to the Costa Grande site. And, oh, by the way, I teach at Costa Grande, I'm sorry, I didn't introduce myself. I teach English at Costa Grande, and I'd have to go back to the Costa Grande site to do that. From the program I use, I can do the whole thing. And when I wanna view a report in Aries, I can only view it in a PDF format, unless I have a Microsoft Interchanger, which I don't have, so I can't copy and paste it. But from the program that I work with, I can copy and paste it, send it to parents. The parent capability, parents love this program. They can, they can see everything in a graphic interface, it's easy to navigate. They can set it up where this program will send them reports every week if they want, or if their student's grade goes below a certain point. I can log discipline and have the discipline logged visible to the parents, and it can send out a report to the parents. I can, it's SIS compatible, basically, because when I was at Kennelworth for a couple of years, a lot of teachers were using it there, and that's how I found out about it, and it is SIS compatible. So, with, with the cuts that have been made, with the added students that we have, we have a full load, which I'm going to have next year, that's 167 students, and as an English teacher, we don't talk anymore in terms of how many papers we have to grade, it's how many feet we have left to grade, because it really is a lot of work. So, anything that's gonna add time on for me is a big deal. I have been using this program, like I said, since 2008, and in order to sort of make it compatible with what the schools wanted, on the Costa site, I have a link to Jupiter up there, so that the parents just need to click it, they can go. It is one more passcode for them, because it's protected, of course, but parents can get in that way. So, I'm very concerned about having the mandate come down, about using Aries.net, and it's the reason why I voted the way that I did. And I wanted to share that with the board, because I think it's important that you know, for teachers like myself, it's not about being online. I, I love being online, I have great parent communication. I wanna keep that, and I wanna keep that same level of parent appreciation and success that I've had with it, I wanna keep that going, and I really don't wanna be sent back. So, that's, I just wanted to tell you about that. I wish I could show it to you, because you'd see it immediately, but I appreciate your, your hearing out on that. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming down and sharing, please. Any other cards from speakers from public comments? We will close public comments. Thank you for not making me read them.
Oh, I got it.
Out of that, reports on activities and correspondence to school board members, it is summertime, and I will be approached to tell you that I've taken a small vacation and done virtually nothing, other than spend time here. Does anybody have anything to add to...
I went to Lake Tahoe last week, saw a possible alternative school size, but...
You couldn't find any. I'm sure you've got a bunch of pictures we can look at. All right. All right. Anybody else? Moving on to the consent agenda. I would take a motion to approve the...
So...
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? There we go. All right, let's go to administration, human resources, the first item that we have for Ron is gonna be the important report.
I'd make a motion. Actually, I moved to, to have a motion and stuff. It's not great.
Either way.
I won't say another word until you're ready.
I'd make a motion to, literally, if I had a report.
Do we have a second?
Well, we're gonna wait to hear what Ron has to say, maybe we don't wanna make a motion, maybe your Ron's report will be so hideous and horrible...
You, you can still make a motion and, and vote it down, but well, you make trouble, you do.
Let's stick with tradition. So, do we have a second?
Second. All right. So, I've not been around doing much either, I missed you the last couple of months, I was gone. But tonight I'm here, because with two, actually introductions to make with two new principals in Padilla City Schools, but they are Padilla City Schools employees for, and so I think I'll invite them both up at the same time, so they can, because they're gonna be partners as they move forward.
Do they want it?
And Rebecca. So, um, you've met Greg before, probably. He is, um, he is the new principal of Carpe Diem in Sonoma Mountain. He, for the last three years, has been the principal of Crossroads, and prior to that, he was a teacher at Kennelworth in the Industrial Arts Program. He has been, obviously, a part of our leadership team for the last three years, a really strong member of the team, bringing a lot to school, to the school. He is a, he's also a woodworking artist, which I haven't seen, I've seen the work that he's done at Crossroads, and I haven't seen any other work.
Good stuff.
And, and he's also been a firefighter in Yosemite, and worked in the woodworking business. And what he hopes to do, it's very much aligned with Common Core, is take his experience in both education and in the career world, combine them to help students make some decisions about where they want to go post-high school in their career or school. And this is Greg.
That's great. And I, and I did start, actually, before Kennelworth, I was three years at Courton Community Schools. That's where I cut my teeth with Alt Ed. It was a great experience, but again, I appreciate your support, and, and I am excited in this new role to keep moving forward with what Rusty Sims started. Again, thank you very much.
And, and so, I believe while I was gone, Rusty came in front of me. So, we've changed the entire Alt Ed leadership role, and, and the other person's, Becky Lofton, who is coming to us, she is the new principal of Crossroads, and so it's good that they're here, because, yes, and she comes from San Antonio, where she has been a social science teacher, teaching all ranges of social sciences, you can well imagine, for six years. Before that, she actually was at Padilla High School, some of you, I don't know, taught AP US History and US History. She has been an important member of a teacher leader throughout the district, involved in the district leadership team, the rollout of Common Core, she's been a bits of support provider for some of our new teachers, and so, I think we all, but I, I've known Rebecca for a long time, actually, taught her little sister many years ago, and really look forward to working with her closely in the, the leadership team. So, so Rebecca Lofton, that's our new Crossroads principal.
And again, thank you for, first of all, the opportunity to be part of the leadership team here in the district, and just for putting your faith in me, somebody who's kind of new at this education administration role. I'm very excited to get started as well, and glad to have somebody local that can help me, since school starts next week.
So, anyhow, welcome.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Now, we have a report, and we already have a motion, and a second, so I have a few. Have any comments from anyone?
No.
So, welcome you both, and you have, I think I shared with you, Greg, I envy your jobs, because you can make the most impact, almost on anybody in this district, I think. You have unbelievable potential in your students, and it must feel good going home every night. So, congratulations, assuming that everybody here is okay with this. And I'll ask, we're both, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Welcome.
You're in, thanks.
Thank you. Okay. Executive Leadership Forum, recommended motion for, to approve the superintendent's participation on the executive leadership forum.
Someone?
Second. Steve, you want to speak a little?
So, I've been invited to, just been executive leadership forum at UC Davis. You will take me out of the district on a few Fridays, and I wanted to bring this to the board for your consideration, and the intent is to bring superintendents together with educational leaders throughout the station, and actually, North America, to look at how best district offices can serve the instruction they have in classrooms. So, I wanted to have the board take this into consideration, and hopefully approve participation.
Any discussion?
If you're going up there to learn, not just hang out at Burgers and Brews, right?
Yes, that's true, yes. It's, it's Fridays and some Saturdays.
Oh, I saw the, the write-up, and I, I thought that would be very appropriate, given the transition to Common Core, especially the, the subject that we've been working with.
It sounded like you got chosen and nominated.
Yeah, I was nominated to participate, it was, I'm sorry, I've been asked, I need to be responding soon.
Big honor.
Thank you.
You know, we pushed big time, you know, here in the district collaboration, and we asked our teachers to do it, we asked all of our employees to do it, and we could support you in the same thing, and get a bunch of smart people in our own smart areas come out, so I can see no downside and only upside.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Close? You're open.
Thank you.
Okay, so we had asked to have Business Services 7 made a hold of.
Yes.
So, Business Services 7 is, recommended motion that the board authorize renewal of the agreement with the Northern California Shop Iron Workers Apprentices Training Program Local 790, provide vocational education for apprentices in accordance with provisions of California Labor Code 3074.
Someone?
Second.
And I asked to have it held, because I'd like to take the opportunity when we have the unique circumstances of providing not traditional, you know, reading, writing, arithmetic, education to our students, and that we're working with outside groups to provide a broader spectrum of education, and the, the iron workers apprenticeship program, et cetera, is one of the pieces that helps have such complete, and I just like to make sure that's public knowledge, that these things continue to go on, and we look for other, other opportunities for our students.
Absolutely.
Well, Mary's right, and I don't think people realize now that, that trend, and I'm around a lot of businesses, all kinds of businesses, and they're looking for people to come out, hands-on, ready to go. This technical training is, is kind of a nugget, and we need to, I think, develop that, support it, and all that Troy mentioned about partnerships and collaboration, all that that we can give, more power to us, and it just serves our, our students better, because they come out and will be able to get to the front of the line for available jobs, because they want, businesses now, they, they don't wanna do in-house training, they want you ready to go. I mean, you'll learn from experience, but they want, they want ready, ready workers. And I think this is kind of the future in a way, with, with our technical education, that the more diverse we can have it, and the higher, the skill level we can, we can provide, the better. And I think we'll become a magnet district because of it, but I will already support it, needless to say.
In a previous life, in a previous business life, I actually worked with these folks, and this is a big deal to them, and we spent a lot of time realizing exactly what Mike said, that there's opportunity here, and there's a need, and the more of these that we can have, the better. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's move on to, out of eight, recommended motion, the board ratifying hearing into an agreement with M. Ferris Electrical Inc. the amount of $40,070, the elementary capital facilities funds for electrical work on a new portable building at McKinley Elementary School.
Someone?
Steve, you go ahead and second this one, I just wanna be cautious, because I don't know if I have a conflict with his being a client, but I do know it's a friend, so just...
I second.
Who's good?
So, I get this one. In regards to the facilities, you know, we're adding the new port, replacing a very old... So I get this one, um, in regards to the facilities, you know, we're adding the new portal, replacing a very old, um, portable at the campus, and when this particular quote came forward, I was shocked about the amount, as you probably get very surprised.
Yes.
So we went out and got a couple, we got another quote, and it came in five thousand dollars higher, and I felt a lot better about this proposal. But it is, um, bringing the electricity, as well as the alarms and the phones to, to the, um, new facility. And, um, forty thousand dollars seems to be an appropriate price based on going out and giving competitive proposals for this job.
So, do we have, I know, an electrician program?
Yeah. Let's get with I D E W right now, because, uh.
Yeah, we, we have, we have district electricians, but this is over and above what our electricians, I should form.
They don't have time to do it, they're so busy.
Yeah. It's definitely a strictly busy trade in maintenance and operations.
Will this, uh, so the next time the portable, or, you know, fifteen years, will this portable disappear or place, or whatever?
Well, yeah, the, the other port was probably thirty-seven years old.
It was infested with termites.
Yeah.
Is this one going to, uh, is this working, being a, will we put this electrical in a place where we'll be able to use it again? Or the next time, or to do it three more times?
Yeah, I was, um.
Are you happy with where this portable is?
This portable is staying, I wouldn't, we walked around the portable, it looks very good, we have one more step to take, and that is, um, this, this particular port has been out of the gated section of McKinley Elementary School. We're moving the gates out to, to bring this into the campus.
Okay.
Um, it's on the corner of Ellison Madison, and it sits outside of where we, where we lock up the school. Um, we're going to change that and move the gates out, so this will be within the area in which we want.
Is it the Pedaluma Parent Nursery School portal?
So Pedal, Pedalum Parent Nursery School is on the other end of the new wing.
Okay. So it's on the other side.
Correct, so this is, this will be used in the short term by the ACES program, um, for the outer school, but it's DSA-approved and can be, um, a classroom at any time, uh, that's, that's needed.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Did you? All of them, yes. So, three, oh, and one?
Yep.
Two.
Three and?
Oh, one and one.
Oh.
Two and one. Yeah.
Item nine, uh, the right-of-entry ratification, and I gotta tell you, this is a new one for me, um, that the board ratify a right-of-entry to the city of Pedaluma to enter property at Costa Grande High School to construct a water main for reclaimed water.
So.
And then, Paul, second.
So, um, the city of Pedaluma is, um, entering in, they're, they're providing a reclaimed water project for the entire, uh, Costa Grande High School campus for irrigation, so this, allowing them to, uh, do this digging and insert the pipe, the, um, the piping to, to do that, to hook it up, requires them to do, um, I'm sorry, I am not being very good here, they're basically trenching and putting the hookup on the property. This will be converted into an easement, but because the, uh, appropriate documentation with all the legal language has not been drawn up yet, um, this is just a temporary permit, basically, to allow them to do the trenching on the property.
Should I get a license, just to allow them access?
Thank you. Remember, I received it on those before.
Yeah.
Yeah, it isn't usual, because we typically bring easements, but at this point, um, we want to get started with the project. We will not be connecting to this until after we're through irrigation this summer, and then, um, in the fall, after we stop irrigating, we will connect, make the connection. It requires purple heads, so that people know it's reclaimed water on the campus, and we're, obviously, as we're irrigating camp, campus in the summertime and early fall, um, you can't be replacing and modifying the heads and reconnecting a different system.
So this will be at all non-potable ports, I mean, like out in their football field?
Yeah, this will be.
Because they have that garden out there.
Irrigation or, yeah, we have switched all of the, um, non-domestic water over to, um, an irrigation backflow, so all of those things are not, um, using domestic, we'll be using.
Can you use that in the hatchery too?
Hatchery has, it's on the well.
Well.
Okay.
So they're not connected, and going to this reclaimed water will save about forty-five percent of the water bill for that campus, so we should save about, I don't know, forty, forty-five thousand dollars a year on irrigation for Costa Grande.
See, it's already paid for the electrical. So we spend somewhere around a hundred thousand dollars a year for water at Costa Grande. Isn't that amazing?
It is, it's a lot of money, it's under.
And then, how much are artificial fields? Herbal nets are pricey.
Well, the issue, one of the issues with, um, artificial fields, although we're very interested in going there, is the fact that they have a lifespan of about ten to twelve years.
And they still have to be watered. Or cleaned, they have to be washed.
Any other questions on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close? Okay, let's move to educational services, the, uh, I see you're right, this is the one I asked you. Uh, item six, Pedaluma High School Agricultural Career Technical Education Incentive Grant, the recommended motion of the board approve, Pedaluma High School's Agricultural Career Technical Education Incentive Grant for two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen. Second. And my own comment was the same comment that Mary had, um, well, sort of sidebar off of what Mary had to discuss, which is, and, and Mike as well, that we really have an opportunity to try to, to bolster this program, become a magnet school, and, um, realize that there are children that this is their chosen path, and we should support it, and not everybody goes to college, uh, and welders make a whole bunch of money, and they provide for their community, and they take care of their families, and that's a honorable trait, we should, uh, in any way, we can't support it, so. Same thing, I just wanted to bring this out, and make sure that everyone understood that we're trying to focus on the whole child, people, or every child.
And the whole community.
Exactly. Exactly, so.
So I have a question, is that a grant that Pedaluma High applies to?
Yes, it's, it's a, it's not a very large grant, but it's a grant that they've gotten for, ever since I've been here, and that's been an eighteen year, so, um, and, and the advocate community benefits from it, so.
So they've received this amount of money and then, and then like again, because it's part of the program.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close? That's it for educational services, future business calendar of activities, our next regular meeting is going to be September tenth. Do we have anything, uh, dramatic that we need to prepare for today, or start preparing for today for September tenth?
September tenth will be unedited actuals, um, from the business services department.
Okay.
Have we had any updates from, from the state regarding budgets?
Um, regarding budgets, actually, uh, there isn't enough detailed information out there for me to provide you a real update. Right now, um, what we're hearing.
It's not on the agenda, so you don't have to talk about it, but maybe we could have like a little.
Oh, yeah.
Intro, uh, in September.
Give me good gossip, though.
Well, actually. Actually, um, we, we may not actually have any real information until the first interim report on.
In December?
And the State Board of Education.
Oh, I can.
And when we get it, we reconcile how much we thought we were going to get with what we actually spent, and then we plan forward based upon what we think we might get going. Basically, we're just.
That's how I live my life. Basically, we're just guessing.
What, what's interesting is the State Board of Education isn't actually going to, well, their deadline to come out with all the regulations on LCF Act are scheduled in January, so, yeah.
Okay, so we've got some signing of papers, and then I do need to open up this, uh, meeting to comments from the public for our closed item, uh, that we have following this meeting right now, so are there any comments from the public? And the public for that closed item? Seeing nobody rise, we'll have no comments from the public on the closed session items, and I'm going to adjourn to closed session.